What does all that mean?
Countdown, countdown.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome this afternoon to this additional council meeting. We'll hear from submissions to the draft budget. I would now like to welcome councillor James to the country.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe, and my fellow councillors. Firstly, I pay my respects to our ancestors. I acknowledge our elders, both past, present and emerging. I would like to acknowledge the Yorta Yorta Nations and all its people, whose land we meet on today. So, on behalf of the respected elders council, the sixteen family groups, and the eight respected tribes who share in the status of traditional owners, I say a very warm welcome to this wonderful land and waterways. Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe.
Thank you very much, councillor James. We Greater Shepparton City Council acknowledge the Yorta Yorta peoples of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay our respect to their tribal elders. We celebrate their continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item three, the privacy notice. This public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with the official minutes of this meeting. The government's principles, as listed one to nine, council considers that the recommendations contained in this agenda gives effect to the overarching governance principles stated in section nine slash two of the Local Government Act 2020. These principles, as mentioned, are listed one to nine in the agenda. Apologies, we have nil received. Do any councils have a conflict of interest that needs to be declared? No, thank you very much. Councillors, on page seven, item seven point one, draft budget 2021-2022, hearing of section two two three submissions. There is a recommendation on page seven that standing orders be suspended to allow submitters to be heard in support of their written submissions on the draft budget 2021-2022. Would a council like to move the motion, please? Councillor Priestley?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'd like to move the recommendation as printed in the agenda on page seven, that standing orders be suspended to allow submitters to be heard in support of their written submissions on the draft budget twenty one twenty two.
Very much. Do I have a second done? Councillor Brophy, all those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to our submissions and you must have the list in front of you. And our first submitter is Paul Uniac. We now invite Paul to the meeting. Good afternoon, Paul, welcome. You're on mute.
Oops, now we're up.
That's all right. Well, just to let you know, it's a five minute, I know you do have two times, but your first time is five minutes. You'll be given a one minute time warning. So, if you'd like to proceed.
Thank you. To the councillors, I present this budget submission on behalf of winter sports clubs and users of Greater Shepparton Council facilities during the 2021 winter sports season. All sports clubs have done it tough through COVID in 2020, but particularly the winter clubs. Winter sport was shut down in March 2020 with the first lockdown. Some sports tried to get a season started, once, some even twice, in April and July, before being completely shut down in August. Clubs that tried to restart it spent valuable funds to give their players a season in a vague bid to help keep some normality in people's lives. Many clubs were able to get minor COVID support grants through the federal or state governments, but these totaled two to three thousand at best. Being volunteer run meant that the clubs did not qualify for Jobkeeper subsidies. That left the vast majority of clubs with mainly volunteer workforces shortened or non-existent seasons. Sponsors too concerned about their own businesses and the effects of COVID would have to provide their normal assistance. Players and parents unwilling to pay fees for 2020 season. By far, the local club's greatest support has come from our council COVID support package. In comparison, summer sports started their season, some of them a week late, and missed a single weekend on the five day lockdown in February. The seasons were basically unscathed. There was more work for volunteers, keeping COVID safe rules in check, but relatively a full season was had by the summer sports. In very stark contrast, the winter clubs after a twelve month layoff have now come back in 2021 with similar or greater overheads than 2019. Less players, less volunteers, less player fee income and a greater workload because of COVID rules. A prime example is the local AFL teams who are forfeiting games through a lack of player numbers. They are not the only sport to struggle on numbers. Local AFL presidents have said, and I quote, "Greater workload, less volunteers", who are now being worked harder than pre-COVID. I've also spoken with hockey and soccer club presidents, who all have similar stories. Volunteers and players have not returned as Victoria continues to deal with the COVID pandemic. This winter season, we are seeing less kids return to sport. This means less parents. And the parents in kids' sport are the volunteers. They're the coaches, the administrators, and they are the umpires in a lot of cases. We've taken it for granted that volunteers will just be there and someone will do it. But in this continuing COVID environment, they are not. A relevant quote that I read the other day, "I don't think people fully realise just how important sport was until COVID. It's not just kicking goals or throwing or hitting goals or taking marks or placing tackles or dribbling up the court. It doesn't matter. That's simply the vehicle for the wellbeing of communities and the social fabric." My ask of council, as the COVID pandemic continues to affect our lives at every level, as we meet here today under more strained COVID affected, seven day, possibly fourteen day lockdown, is to extend the current support for winter clubs, set to expire June 30th, to the end of 2021. That is, no charge on pavilions, grounds and change rooms. Most winter clubs are now halfway through their season. And with this current seven day lockdown happening, the rest of the season is no way assured. Large gatherings are often not allowed for long periods once we come out of this COVID lockdown, as it raises its head. And this means even if games are allowed, there'll be less gate takings, less canteen and less sponsors for the balance of 2021. A further request is for clubs who paid their food licences in December nineteen for the 2020 season to have a credit raised in the December twenty twenty one period for the 2022 season. The winner clubs, unlike Bunnings, never served a sausage in 2020, yet paid the full licence fees for their canteens. Make sports field light charges no charge for the balance of the 2021 winter season. I thank you on behalf of all sports clubs for listening and the users of council facilities. COVID nineteen is not about what happens in Shepparton. All of our sports are governed and regulated by the rules and the way we play of how the whole state is affected by COVID. That's the end of my submission. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks for that, Paul. Do you council see any clarity on that, if I'm happy? Councillor Priestley?
Paul, could you just give us an example of a club perhaps that you participate in? If revenue was a dollar before COVID, what revenue for the club might you forecast for this year?
Um, that's, Rob, on a, councillor Priestley, on a pure dollar basis, I believe a lot of clubs will take several years to catch up. And it'll depend on whether you're a junior club, a senior club, more professional. Certainly, the winner clubs have done it a lot tougher than the summer clubs. There are, gate takings have been affected, but sponsors have been affected. And really, it's what you're carrying forward from 2020. The time that it hit was March. Most people had completed a preseason. The GVFL was due to start within a week of COVID hitting. It's all of the costs for uniforms and everything else that we've put out there. It's a really, it's a good question, but it's a hard question to answer on a micro when I'm talking to so many clubs on the macro level. Have you been affected? Does it cost you more? A lot of clubs have reduced their fees in 2021 to take into account people either not coming back or having paid some of their fees in 2020. So, on a dollar for dollar, Rob, I've not drilled down to that level when I've been talking to basketball, netball, AFL, soccer, hockey, the gamut of sports.
Thank you.
Councillor Summer?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to clarify, are we able to ask questions or are just clarifying statements? Because I've got a question, if that's allowed.
You can ask, ask a question, absolutely. It's fine, I'm going to stay on time. That's fine, it's our time, I mean, mind if we've got others booked, you can say that, it's fine.
Okay, I'm just wondering, for the public's benefit mostly, why should we prioritise sport in the pandemic as above other clubs in need? Obviously, sport's pretty important, but I'd like to see the perspective of someone in the thick of it. Why sport? Because obviously, we already do invest a lot in sport.
Um, yeah, I think that's a really good question, why sport? Well, that quote that I read, which was actually out of one of the first studies that's been done by a university in regards to the effects of COVID on society. It was run across a large cross section of sports based out of Adelaide, not doing it as tough as Victoria. And you may recall Adelaide and the rest of Australia actually got a sports season. So, Victoria has been hit a lot harder. It is about priorities, it is how far we can stretch. I mean, in Shepparton, we're probably talking somewhere between six and nine thousand men, women, grandparents, children, teenagers who play sport. And I suppose what I'm asking for in that priority is to try and shorten the amount of time that it's going to take us to get people back playing sport. I don't think there's many sports that have come into 2021 with the same amount of players that they had in 2019. And as I read in that quote, it's simply the vehicle for wellbeing for communities and the social fabric. So, I think prioritising sport, I think there's a lot of places to prioritise. There's a lot of businesses that have been closed. And I'd like to see, you know, support coming from council for all of these places. You've only got so much money to be able to spend, but we are hitting a large portion of the population. Whilst there may be between six, seven and nine thousand people playing different types of sports, all of those people have brothers, sisters, uncles, mothers, fathers that are associated with that. So, you're probably then reaching sixteen, seventeen thousand people in our municipality. So, it really comes down to, are you getting bang for your buck if you're supporting these people out playing sport?
Thank you, Paul. We'll have to keep going, councillors, to stay on time. But we will have, obviously, the opportunity to keep in touch with Paul in regarding two further questions, because today really it's listening to our submissions coming in. And there could be lots of questions from each submitter. So, we have to be mindful of that, that we continue to have contact also. We'll just go to your next presentation. Thanks, Paul.
Um, my second presentation is in regards to, it's a similar vein, but it was different enough that I've done a different presentation. So, I apologise for dominating the council's time in two presentations, but I think it's important. If I may begin, I present in regards sport and community field light charges. These are the lights that are turned on at night for the winter sports to allow people to train after five, five fifteen at night, when it's too dark during the winter months. So, to provide a context in regard to field lights, they're charged at a per lux rate. Lux being a light meter. The cost of lighting per lux has risen from fifteen cents in 2018 to twenty cents in 2019, which was a thirty three percent increase. In 2020, it was proposed to increase the charge to twenty five cents, which was a further twenty five percent increase. That was a fifty eight percent increase in sports lighting charges over a two year period and would have been a huge impostor to community sport. Most clubs, again for context, train under a one hundred lux per field light. That equates to twenty dollars per hour for a hundred lux. Council investigated the cost of supplying the lighting, based on a submission that I lodged last year, compared the various field sizes and used by the different sports that use the actual lighting. And the proposed fee for 2021 now reflects a more realistic cost of supplying this lighting and also the different sizes in the sports fields being lit. It was a huge win for common sense and a very fair outcome compared to the charges of the last approximately ten years. Council's 2022 budget papers notes a nine hundred percent decrease in the lighting charge for a netball court. Again, a very fair outcome for netball court when compared to an AFL ground, when it was previously charged at exactly the same rate. All sports people across the council region, including club presidents and treasurers, are very thankful to council for this. My request today acknowledges the appreciation of sports clubs across the Shepparton Council region for the fair reduction in light charges. I also see that there's still more work to be done to ensure council and sports can operate more efficiently. Whilst there are a number of cost inputs that go into calculating the lux charge, the main two, the main two are globes and power supply. I request a transparent review of the current council power cost to be set out and published to all sports clubs. And also, when available, comparatives of the new council green power contract recently signed. So, all sports can have a better understanding of the actual power cost and the calculations of what they pay. Council has declared a climate emergency and has set zero emissions targets. Sports field in Shepparton Council region, including the recently lit up, as in recently installed lights at Victory Park, Kyla Park and Princess Park, all use metal haloid globes, quite an old technology, which have a shorter lifespan and consume more power than LED lighting. I would call on our council and councillors to make further green commitment to work towards converting the power hungry greenhouse generating metal haloid globes to LED for all grounds in Shepparton Council region and to stop installing metal haloid globes for sports fields. Between five and six on a Tuesday to Thursday night, in the winter months, May to September, the spike in council's power use must be huge as all sports clubs hit the lights to train their chosen sport. A further request with the new proposed much lower light lux rate, as noted for the 2021-22 budget, netball twenty cents a lux down to two cents a lux, soccer from twenty cents a lux down to eleven cents a lux. I request all sports lighting charges be waived for the next two financial years to assist all sports clubs as part of the ongoing recovery. Now, well, this may seem like an am but ask, and I genuinely mean no disrespect to council. The appearance is that council has been making a profit from the sports clubs for the better part of the last nine years on these charges levied. Two years of light support would go some way, a long way, to address this inequity and helping during COVID. I'd like to just note, I personally addressed the exact light and ground inequity issue and netball court paying the same as an AFL ground with council some four years ago. It's only been actioned this year. As a final request, I employed council to commit to work towards converting one local sports ground at a time to LED lighting from the metal haloid or more if possible through sourcing LED conversion grants. The ongoing effect of this will be significantly lower power used and a big step towards helping fulfil council's climate emergency pledge to lower greenhouse emissions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Paul. Right on time. Thank you very much for coming in today. And it's a great, you know, obviously, support to our local sporting community and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you so much, Paul. I would now like to invite David Jemison to be brought in, please. Good afternoon, David, welcome. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, David. Welcome to the meeting. I'd just like to let you know that you have a five minute time slot and in four minutes, you'll be given the one minute time breakdown.
Thank you, lady.
Like to start, that would be great.
My name is David Jemison and I am the Chair of the Kensington Gardens Shepparton Residence Committee. I would like to briefly expand on some of the points in our letter of submission and petition delivered to council on March twenty nine, twenty twenty one. Looking into the near future, next financial year, we request that council look at a differential rate category for villages coming under the Retirement Villages Act, recognising that these properties have special circumstances, including benefits to council in the city of Greater Shepparton. Records will show that one third of residents at Kensington Gardens have moved from well outside the Greater Shepparton area. This greatly benefits Shepparton in numerous ways. We have spent money building in this city. We shop locally and we run social functions in and around the city. Also, along with retirement, comes the time to volunteer. In our case, an enormous amount of volunteer hours is contributed to the city by our residents. Of twenty nine villages surveyed, they do a hundred and ninety four point five hours of volunteer work per week. We strongly request that council in this coming financial year seriously consider deleting or adjusting the municipal charge for properties coming under the Retirement Villages Act. Property owners outside Kensington Gardens, who each pay a hundred and ninety five dollars per annum, receive individual rate notices and have their roads, gutters, stormwater network, street lighting, including maintenance electricity and replacement, nature strip beautification, trees and shrubs and street sweeping, all provided and attended to by council. Kensington Gardens Village is under one title and the operator receives one spreadsheet for the whole village rates, including the municipal charge. At present, there are approximately a hundred and fifty homes, about one third of which are single occupancy, in total paying twenty nine thousand two hundred and fifty to council. Is this fair and equitable when Kensington Gardens residents receive none of the above services, which other residents outside of the village do? In fact, we pay double for these services, as we pay a maintenance fee to the operators for the same services provided by council to other residents. This does not comply with council's philosophy of being fair and equitable. When the village is completed, there will be approximately two hundred and ninety houses generating, if the municipal charge remains the same, fifty six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars per year. Another point worth considering is that Kensington Gardens pay direct to council and there is never a late payment or the problem of council following up for late payments. We strongly request that council provide all of the above services or agree that each house in Kensington Gardens pays a municipal charge of perhaps twenty four for administration. Hundred and fifty homes now would pay council three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per year and two hundred and ninety homes in the future, seven thousand two hundred and fifty, which is still much more than an outside home paying a hundred and ninety five for all these services. Is this fair and equitable? This would come closer to complying with council's philosophy. We are not a gated community and our public roads and facilities are utilised by groups and organisations other than the village residents.
One minute.
Pensioner subsidies for all pensioners throughout the GSC area are not just for pensioners at Kensington Gardens. As council records show in our covering letter, the rates for our Kensington Garden houses are much higher than the equivalent properties outside the village, up to nine percent higher in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty on average. Taking into account that each house is on a very small parcel of leased land and the building is leased back to the operator, this is again not fair and equitable. Under the current system, Kensington Gardens residents or their estate will actually lose money after a number of years, as we currently have a non-profit sales agreement under the Retirement Villages Act, which could be a deterrent to potential residents to our village and our city if we are continued to be taxed and rated unfairly. Thank you for your time this afternoon and listening to our submission. We hope that you will see fit to take what we have submitted into consideration for the next budget period.
Thank you very much, David. Thank you so much for coming in today. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Happy day.
Thank you.
Now invite Carl Walters into the meeting, please. Good afternoon, Carl, welcome. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, good, welcome. Just to let you know, Carl, it's a five minute time slot. You'll have notice at the one minute mark.
No worries, that's fine.
Thank you.
You can hear me, that's fine. So, thank you for the opportunity to have a bit of a chat about a submission that we put into the council's budget. And I don't usually have a whinge, but after going through the draft budget, I sort of felt inclined that, just wanted to point out a few concerns that we had as a community in Tatura. And so, I assume you've all read the letter, but I might just summarise it a bit. So, in the end, after looking at the budget, I really just found two items that related to capital activity in Tatura that I could understand what they were. One was a shade sale and one was a new hook lift bins at Tatura Park. A total, grand total of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. And after searching a bit further, I found Casey Street, two hundred thousand dollars for whatever that was. I assume it was resurfacing. And then an upgrade to service and a building for ninety one grand, which I wasn't quite sure what it was for. But anyway, I'm assuming that it's one of the council buildings in Tatura. So, in the end, what I then looked at was what's allocated for the total of Greater Shepparton. And in Shepparton itself, there's twenty two and a half million dollars, but the total capital budget's about seventy million dollars, which you guys are well aware of. about $70 million, which you guys are well aware of. And then when I looked at what was listed for tat, added it all up and generously included the $291,000, which I weren't quite sure what it was for, that cut down to about 0.7% of council's budget, of capital budget. And I thought, that just seemed ludicrous to me. And I do understand that there is a whole myriad of activities that are listed under the unknown capital side of the Wicks Programme, road surfacing and gutters and curbs and channels and footpaths, et cetera. But I just saw for a town the size of Taturra, that seemed a bit on the low side and the more I read it, the more disappointed I got. So I tried to avoid falling into the whinge session. But then I looked at the percentage of Taturra's citizens and we've got nearly 5,000 people in Taturra and that gives us about 7% of the total community and we've got 0.7% of the capital budget. And I know there's a whole series of things that are funded through the grants process that comes from federal and state and I'll be generous and say there might be 25 or $30 million in there, which is great. But it sort of eludes me a little bit of how we in Taturra get to be the focus of some of those capital grant seeking efforts. I know some are driven out of community groups, but I do know the most driven out of council staff themselves. So my concern, I suppose, is how do we get our activities that we've put forward into that council grant seeking process? Because we as a community can try to do that, we actually need to be supported pretty solidly in it. And we have had efforts over the years and we've had stuff funded this year and last year, et cetera, et cetera. But I just, I just am sort of trying to put forward that we'd like to see some consistent effort that sees Taturra receive a reasonable capital share annually, which will give us an opportunity to put things forward and then to work towards getting those achieved. So I've included in our submission a list of what we've previously put forward. And I can't see on any forward look planning because there is no forward look planning, obviously to the community of where those things exist. So if you look in my submission, we put Rob Matiev, a seven-morior gardens extension, we've been putting that forward for 15 years and it's our highest priority. We haven't even got a design budget in this year's capital budget, even though we're trying to work on design. One minute. So we've got pedestrian crossings, there's been a couple of pedestrian crossings we've put forward, they're not in the look anywhere, we want a playground, we've got lighting to Taturra Park, we've got walking crack extensions, we've got toilet facilities, we haven't got any. So from my perspective as Chair of the Community Plan, my role essentially is to put forward what we want as a priority and we do that repeatedly. We repeatedly get, that's quite expensive and we can't quite afford that, I'm not sure where that's going to fit, et cetera, et cetera, even though we do get a couple of wins. But at the moment, our wins are quite 2.7% of the total capital budget of Greater Shepparton Council and I've got to try and defend that of the community and at the moment I'm not feeling that inclined to do that. So I just really would ask you guys as councillors to think about, how do you adjust that share in some way? And is there any way as part of a response to a draft budget that we can see a couple of returns so we can actually, I can proactively go back to the community and say, oh yeah, we actually achieved it this year because a hook bin and a shade sale probably isn't going to cut it. And so I would take questions, but I just thought, no, I don't usually have a bit of a whinge, I'm usually quite grateful, but this year I just felt a bit let down.
Thanks so much, Carl, that's really important, that's why we have today's discussions, you know, to see perhaps we can make improvement on the draft budgets exactly while we're here. It's really great, you know, you're doing a great job over there and we know what a great community Taturra is for sure, they're very self-sufficient and they do some great stuff, so it's really great to have your voice and be the voice of Taturra, it's really important. So thank you for coming in, I don't know if the councillors have anything to add, but
Thanks, Kim, I'd like to comment. Carl, thanks for your submission and I don't mind having you say you're really a key part of the Taturra community and we appreciate all the work you do over there, it's fantastic. You've got a big job yourself that you do, but then you take all the time to work for the community here, so we need to listen to what you've got to say. I just point out that capital spend's not always an even spend and I know you'll recognise that I'll raise this, we did have the library, of course, a big capital spend for Taturra last year and next year, the 200 for Casey Street, I think it was, is the preliminary work for a $2 million refurbishment of Casey Street in the next budget going forward. So it does go up and down a little bit, but we know you're there and you put your projects well and you've got some issues here in your submission, which the council will consider and we'll be having a closer look at these over the next week or so. And some of those are quite worthy, so I just thank you for making your submission and the way you go about it, it's always done in the right manner.
Thanks, Peter, and I do understand it's difficult and things get buried, but I'm happy that you're listening.
Thanks so much, Carl, really appreciate you coming in today.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, we now welcome Cameron Drewish into the meeting. Hi, Cameron, welcome. Can you hear me?
I can.
Welcome, Cameron. Just to let you know, you've got a five-minute time slot with a one-minute notice, so off you go.
Thank you, dear Mayor Keith, councillors and Mr Harriet, thank you for the opportunity to present another budget submission. I presented a submission last year on the need for investment into the multi-purpose pitch facility at the sports precinct and for the lots and thereof in readiness for a major hockey tournament in July this year, the junior state championships. Although budget allocation wasn't made, I've remained hopeful some necessary improvements will be made in time for the tournament. After an additional 12 months to prepare due to Covid, we are now only one month to the day out from this tournament and we are still uncertain how council are going to provide two adequately lit pitches for this tournament. Significant planning for this major event is largely on hold for us, the GB Hockey Association, Hockey Victoria and council's event team, pending the outcome of any work that is to be done on these lights. Although the GVHA and other sporting, local sporting groups stand to benefit long-term from a facility with improved lighting, first and foremost, this statewide hockey tournament that council brought to the area needs to be serviced to the expected standard. Council's ability and reputation to host top-quality hockey events is in jeopardy. We hope to see the works on the lights over the coming weeks, resulting in an outcome that provides significant improvement to the lighting of this pitch, enabling the JSC tournament to run as it should and providing a facility that local sports groups can use much more than it has been done to date. Such an outcome may enable me to withdraw this submission. Anything short of a permanent improvement works achieving the minimum lighting standards for junior and minor grade competitions would be unsatisfactory from the GVHA's perspective, in which case we request an allocation of funds to see this achieved permanently and to the level that we're now with this facility to be used significantly more by the GVHA, other local sporting groups, and importantly, see a return of state and national hockey events to Shepparton. As an indication of cost, a permanent upgrade would be approximately $50,000. The GVHA would again offer to contribute 20% of any permanent upgrade work. Your time and consideration of this submission is greatly appreciated and I wish others making submissions today the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cameron, really appreciate that. The councillors have anything to add?
Thanks, Cameron. I know our staff have been working with your team closely and it's probably disappointing we couldn't get the electricians up last night due to them coming up from, I think it was a Covid issue, I'm not too sure, but I'm assured that they're there tonight and with a bit of tweaking, we hope to get the 250 lux out of them. That would be the ideal result, but they were specified to be delivered at that level and that's why we're getting the contractors back to ensure that will happen. So I'm confident that we will be able to deliver on what you're asking for and we'll be able to have these events because the events like you're running are so important to our community and we thank you for encouraging them, bringing them to the town and making them happen. So yeah, we want to try and work with you to make it happen as well. So I think there is a good result out of this and hopefully you go tonight will know.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much, Cameron. Thanks for coming in. Thank you.
Thanks, Cam.
Okay, we'd like to now invite Jen Phillips into the meeting.
And we are still uncertain how council are going to provide two adequately lit pitches.
Hello, Jen, have we got you yet?
Not yet.
Not yet. Just waiting for Jen to come in. That's probably quicker than she expected.
Pretty good.
We can see Jen's office, so she is in, just waiting for her to come back to the desk.
A cup of coffee.
Hello, Jen. Hello, Jen, welcome. Yes, we've been looking at your nice office for a minute. You're on mute. So, hello, welcome.
Thank you.
Jen, just to let you know, it's a five-minute session with a one-minute notice when you get to your four minutes, so welcome. Off we go.
Thanks very much, everybody, good to see you all. The five neighbourhood houses within the local government area are seeking an increase in funding of 5,000 per annum. Currently, each neighbourhood house receives 18,819 excluding GST each year and has now not sought any increases in funding since 2007. Neighbourhood houses, particularly through times of crisis for individuals on local and state levels, prove themselves to be effective grassroots organisations that fill gaps in service delivery. Excuse me. During the pandemic, inequality has been exacerbated. The most vulnerable people in our communities, including the aged, people living alone, families, low-income earners, those without transport or suffering mental health and other health issues, have been the hardest hit. During the extended periods of lockdown, our five neighbourhood houses stepped up rather than step back to effectively connect and support our communities. The strength of each house lies in the autonomy and flexibility of the organisation. Community engagement and service responses are meaningful, effective and dynamic. More broadly, over two decades, the five local neighbourhood houses have contributed greatly to building more healthy, inclusive and resilient communities in the Shepparton region. Neighbourhood Houses Victoria engaged Deloitte to do an access economic study at one of our neighbourhood houses in Gippsland and they've been able to develop a methodology that we can transfer to all neighbourhood houses and we were able to see that we brought in nearly $3 in value for every dollar spent by council and that's been consistent. So basically, based on, you know, the nearly $3, that's $15,000 of extra value for each of our houses that we would bring to council. Neighbourhood Houses contribute greatly to the current Greater Shepparton City Council plan, including but not limited to increasing municipal wide average CIFA index of disadvantage, increase the proportion of population who volunteer for a community group or activity once a month, improve access to local health services, reduce the incidence of alcohol and drug-related harm, increase the percentage of residents who meet the recommended fruit and vegetable dietary guidelines, increase the proportion of young people engaged in education, including school and vocational training, decrease unemployment especially for young people, increase the proportion of workforce that is completed for qualifications. An increase in funding would certainly support the increase in cost of building capacity to deliver exceptional outcomes for our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jen, and we all know the value of our community houses, there's no doubt about that and we're so grateful for the work that gets done in those places, it does make a difference, we know it. So I really appreciate you coming in, I'm not sure if the councillors have any comments, Geoff, councillor Dobson?
Yeah, thanks, Jen, for coming in. Is that $5,000 per neighbourhood house you're looking?
Yes. Yes, it is. Jen?
All right, well, thank you so much again, Jen, for coming in today. Have a good day.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
The councillors, now we have Jack McCarty, who's going to be a pre-recorded video. Is that ready to go? Thank you.
I'm submitting this request to ask for lighting to be put in at the Shepparton Skate Park and for it to be upgraded. I've handed in a petition to Timothy Zach about the request. A rough estimated figure for the skate park upgrade of something we would like is about 650,000 to 750,000, as I got an estimated price from Commveek Skate Parks. I'm unsure on the cost of lighting. I'm asking for this upgrade and lighting because the current facility is outdated and the population has grown a lot since its build date in 2001 and it doesn't accommodate to everyone's needs. Lighting will make the facility safer and more usable, winter being dark too early for a lot of people as they don't finish work till 5:30 and summer being too hot during the day. I think it would be a good incentive to get a lot more kids outside and active and it would also bring a lot more people to the town, as not many skate parks around this area are up to date with the needs of what people want to ride these days and no other skate parks in the area have lighting. I believe it will help the town in many ways having a facility that is up to date with lighting. More people will be attracted to the town and the area, but we're a lot safer at night. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make this happen as a lot of people are fed up with no action being taken over the previous years trying to make this a reality. Thanks for your time.
Okay, and I think we all should also note the amount of submissions we did have come through regarding the skate park that we've all been reading through. So that's all of our submissions, councillors, and we now have a recommendation, so on page seven, that the standing orders be resumed. The council please like to move the motion. Councillor Dobson?
I'll move the standing orders be resumed. Mayor?
Thank you very much, do I have a second to please? Councillor James, all in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Councillor, there's also another recommendation on page seven, would the council like to move a motion, it's on the bottom of your agenda there.
Councillor speaks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to a motion that the council, one, receive and note the submissions in response to the public advertisement of the draft budget 2021-2022. Two, acknowledge and thank those who have presented to councillors in support of their submissions. And three, formally consider all received submissions and the adoption of the 2021-2022 budget at the council meeting to be held at 3pm on Tuesday 15th of June 2021.
Thank you very much, do I have a second to please? Councillor Dula, all those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. I would also like to take the time to thank all of those that did make submissions, it's a really important time for our community, we're obviously looking at still the draft budget, so there's a lot of conversation still to be had. I would now like to close I would now like to close the meeting at 10 minutes to four. Thank you very much.